Ms. Chester. Mr. Cho. Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Roche.
Here.
Mr. Yu- uh, sorry, Ms. Yucktman. Mr. Warrenbrun.
Here.
And Mr. Welch.
Here we have a quorum. This time it asked for approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Moved in second. All in favor of the minutes indicated by saying aye. Minutes are approved. This time we have a continued public hearing. ZBA 2023 dash C dash oh five. A request by Wes Taylor on behalf of PK Elidge Development LLC for a conditional use permit to allow self-storage facility at 205 North High Cross Road in the B3 General Business District. Before we proceed, I would like to remind everyone of the case history to this point. The Board initially reviewed the application for a conditional use permit to allow self-storage facility at 205 North High Cross Road on October 18th, 2023. At that meeting, a motion was made to approve the permit. That motion failed. The city attorney later denied or later deemed that the Board's decision was legally insufficient because findings of fact were not presented with the vote. At the following board meeting on November 15th, the Board discussed the city attorney's recommendations to resolve the case in a legally sufficient way and ultimately voted to reopen the case. The case is now reopened, and we will follow our standard procedure for public hearings, which I will describe now. The Chair opens the public hearing. Staff presents a summary of the case. Board members ask questions of staff. The applicant makes a statement and presents evidence. Board asks questions of the applicant. Proponents make statements. Board questions the proponents. The opponents make statements. Board questions the opponent. Rebuttal by the applicant. Rebuttal by objectors. The applicant makes a final statement. Board discusses the case. The Board makes a motion and votes on the case. At this time, I will swear in any members of the audience who wish to speak. Any members of the audience wishing to give testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you get you are about to give will be truthful to the best of your knowledge? When you come to the table to speak, please sign in and state your name for the record. At this time, can we- may we have a staff report?
Yeah, a quick one.
Nick, before you begin, I did want to mention that we have received a valid protest in this case. So approval of the conditional use permit would require a two-thirds vote in favor of the request. Since we have seven members of the Board here tonight, that would require five to vote in favor of the the request for the permit to be approved. Thanks.
Right, so I think we can assume at this point that the Board has probably read the October staff report and rather present for or have reviewed the record of the staff presentation at the October meeting. So we're going to save some time and not run through all the same material again. However, as the case has been reopened, staff did take the opportunity to present some revised conditions with our recommendation of support, which will hopefully mitigate some of the concerns that have been presented. Quick note on the input that we received. Anything received before December 6th has been included in the packet. All of the written input that was included in the packet was in opposition to the request, and it includes a valid written protest, as Kevin discussed. Since the packet went out, we also received a letter in support with a number of signatures attached, and that was presented to the ZBA in an email separately. And there are some hard copies available today as well. Other than this than this written input, we have also received two phone calls in opposition and one in support. So with that out of the way, I will quickly run through the conditions we are now recommending. Those include conformance with the submitted site plan that was included in the initial recommendation as well and would hold them to basically what they're saying they're going to do now. If they wanted to expand or alter the site plan significantly, they would have to come back for another permit. Reduced business hours of 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's down from the initial proposal of closing time at 10:00 PM. Installation of security cameras. New fencing on the south and east sides of the property where there currently is none. Prohibition of dumping in leasing contracts and posting of a phone number that would be monitored by local on-call staff during business hours. We feel that in combination, these conditions should help to address some of the concerns that have been presented related to potential security and dumping that could be associated with a self-storage use. The suggested closing time would now directly align with the adjacent Aldi grocery store's closing time and would result in an earlier reduction in any lighting or noise that could potentially be associated with the use. Regarding some of the issues that have been brought up in communications that aren't being addressed directly here, just to touch on those a bit. As discussed in the staff report, Urbana does have pretty robust regulations for regulating storm water management and lighting. So we don't find that further conditions would be necessary in those areas because our general development regulations kind of take care of it. There has also been some discussion about potential compatibility or incompatibility of a self-storage use near residential areas. And we did look at where the facilities in Urbana are currently located. And of 11 facilities we identified in Urbana, seven are currently directly adjacent to a residential use. There has also been some discussion about potential impacts of a self-storage use on nearby property values. And while we understand there are some strong feelings there, we don't have conclusive evidence, so we aren't comfortable using that as the basis for a decision. So from there, we will leave it up to the Board to evaluate whether the conditional use permit criteria have been met. I have those up here for reference. The Board can also decide that further conditions may be necessary to meet the criteria, or the Board may also decide that the criteria could not be met even with added conditions and can explain that as well. Again, staff are recommending approval based on the findings presented in the October staff report and with the conditions we've just discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Go ahead.
Can you tell me what the difference of between the neighborhood and the district as it's defined here?
I'm going to defer to the principal planner on that one.
It's a good question, and I'm not sure it's ever been clearly defined. Typically, when when we refer to a neighborhood, we're referring to the the surrounding area, the immediately surrounding area. And when we're referring to a district, we're referring to the the specific zoning district that property is in. So in this case, if you're talking about the district, you'd be talking about sort of the B3 General Business District in general.
And the neighborhood would be the 250-feet radius?
That's that's more just something that we use for our notification requirements. I think neighborhood is a little more nebulous than that. But it would, if you're talking neighborhood, it would be sort of just the things that are that are nearby, if that gives you an answer. Not sure.
When we're talking the lighting, have there been any discussion or do we know what type of sign they're going to have at the entrance? It's going to be the business-type of sign?
They have not currently proposed any signage. That would need to go through our review process. The staff report does get into some detail on what the specific lighting maximums and things like that are. I think they would be capped at .2-foot candles at six feet from the property. And businesses with lighting are required to direct it away and shield residential areas from direct lighting.
Getting back to Charles. If I were to make a recommendation here, would we be able to ask for a monument kind of sign that would be rather non-obtrusive and fit into the character of the neighborhood?
I believe that would that would be unacceptable.
I'd say, so so anything you'd be asking for, and I think it's good that you hit on the character term there. So any any condition that you would wish to impose on this permit should tie back to some of these criteria. So you can't ask for conditions that are, you know, that don't pertain to these criteria at all. But if you felt that that was a a character defining piece of the, you know, the area, then you could certainly propose that.
Just for the sake of thoroughness in our answer, I'll just read the section of the zoning ordinance where it talks about the kind of crit- conditions that can be imposed on a conditional use. So the zoning board of appeals shall authorize or deny the requested conditional use and may also impose such additional conditions as are deemed appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare and to carry out the purposes of this zoning ordinance, including but not limited to the following. One, regulation of the location, extent, and intensity of such uses. Two, requirement of the screening of such uses by means of fences, walls, or vegetation. Three, stipulation of required minimum lot sizes. Four, regulation of vehicular access and volume. Five, conformance to the health, safety, and sanitation requirements as necessary. Six, increases to the required yards. And seven, any other conditions deemed necessary to affect the purposes of this zoning ordinance.
When I was reading over this stuff this afternoon, and I think I was actually looking at a page from October 13th staff report, and it says, "Some members of the public have also stated that they feel a self-storage use is incompatible with nearby residential uses" and that there are no other local self-storage uses near residential areas in Urbana. And then you list seven. And, you know, I located them all on the map, and I looked at them all. And I don't I don't really think that any of these seven compared to Berenger Commons and this lot. Closest might be the U-Haul place where there are some condominiums behind it. And they're, you know, all separated by the big, the building, which was a grocery store before. And there is one house that is on Mumford that is close to there. But that's it. The rest of them are one of, they're very small or they're in really in commercial areas. The one on, what is it? Glover isn't industrially zoned, or at least it was. And there's a very old neighborhood on the other side. But it's industrially zoned because the railroad goes right behind it and then Solo Cup or Dart was there. So I, you know, the fact that there you've written that there are seven that are adjacent to residential uses, I don't think that any of these are really applicable to this. I mean, they may have some residential units, but I don't feel they are very good to compare. That's just my opinion. But I do know these well. I know all the properties very well. So that's so they're not like apples and apples at all.
Just to clarify, are you saying that it's not comparable because of the proximity or?
There's proximity and the uses that already were existing. Like Glover Street is right next to a railroad spur. On the east side, there's a railroad that went to Dart or Solo Cup or Motorola Magnavox. And so, and that was zoned industrial. And there's other stuff that had been built. But I I don't think that it's comparable to a big new subdivision. I also think that, you know, it's 150. Everything north of 150 has, you know, been residential except this grocery store. The other uses are really south of 150. 130, where Walmart is. It's it's just two entirely different areas. And I I I wouldn't compare them. I wouldn't use that lot and compare it to the Walmart lot or to the post office and the industrial stuff around there. You know, that the highway is a big dividing point, and it really separates them. So I don't view them as being part of the same neighborhood.
Point of order. I believe we're on number two for the procedure of public hearings, which is, or sorry, number three, asking questions of staff. I feel like we've skipped to number 13, Board discusses the case.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
If I can ask the staff. Looking at the zoning map, you know, one of the things that was brought up in this process was the fact that the Aldi lot is zoned B1, and this lot in question is zoned B3. Could you go over the narrative again of how that came to pass with the proposed health center that might have been built there and why that was rezoned and why it would not have been rezoned back if that particular project didn't go forward?
Sure, so as you alluded to, it was rezoned in 2020 when OSF was proposing to put a clinic there, which was not allowed in the B1 district. So they proposed a rezoning to B3 in addition with a special use permit, which would allow clinic use within the B3 district. Typically, rezonings of parcels, even if they may be prompted by a specific use, the rezonings themselves, I don't know of any case where they've ever been conditioned on a specific use being the only thing that's going to be there. So typically, there's a larger kind of argument that's made. For the, I wasn't the case manager in that case, so I can't speak exactly to the arguments that would have been made in that circumstance. But typically with rezonings, there's a got to be a larger argument for rezoning the parcel outside of one specific use.
Certainly, and I'll I'll piggyback on that because I was here at the time. I was not the case manager, but I was I was leading the planning division at the time. Rezonings, as Nick pointed out, are sort of use agnostic. So even if they're even if they're prompted by a specific case, we are very clear when we when we bring the case to Plan Commission and to City Council that if the project that's currently proposed doesn't go through, this zoning is going to stay here. So you have to make sure that you, when you're making your decision, you're basing it on the particular rezoning criteria and all of the uses that come with the rezoning. We were very clear about it. I've recently reviewed the minutes from that case. So it was known at the time that that the rezoning was going to happen if they approved it, whether or not OSF got built.
But then also the reasoning for the conditional use permit here is because since specifically storage units are not allowed by right in B3, it has to be because of the special conditions met by the property that it would be conditional. You know, it would be convenient to the use, right? So.
Yes, yes. Self-storage is deemed a conditional use in the B3 district, so it needs to meet those three criteria to be approved.
Are there any additional questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant wished to be heard.
Good evening.
Need to sign in.
You can come to the table. If you want to bring the sign-in sheet with you too, just for the ease of other speakers.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kyle Lemkus. I am the attorney representing the applicant, Wes Taylor, through PK Elidge. The applicant submitted an application for a conditional use permit on a proposed self-storage facility at 205 North High Cross Road. That application was not approved on October the 18th. The decision not to approve the conditional use permit was found legally insufficient, and you're being asked to reconsider this application this evening. Any decision made regarding the conditional use permit case must be made pursuant to the zoning code, whereby the Board makes findings of fact regarding that application. That proposed use is conducive to public convenience of that location. The proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it is located or otherwise injurious or detrimental to the public welfare. And third, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards and preserves all the essential character of the district in which it is located, except where such regulations and standards may be modified by 7-6 of the ordinance. If the applicant has met these three criteria, the conditional use permit must be granted per the zoning code. Addressing specifically criteria one, the applicant has satisfied the first criteria by establishing that the community's need for another self-storage facility. Earlier this year, the zoning board has approved conditional use permit for the expansion of another self-storage facility in Urbana. The evidence that this was approved demonstrates the need, given that other existing self-storage facilities are already operating at capacity and seeking that expansion to accommodate public demand. Further, the area surrounding 205 North High Cross Road has only one other self-storage facility. This conditional use permit would allow the community at large greater convenience when seeking self-storage options. The approval of this conditional use permit would allow also for a sidewalk to be constructed where there is not currently a sidewalk in existence, which would benefit the public at large. In sum, the applicant's use would be conducive to public convenience at the location. Examining criteria two, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed and operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it's located or otherwise injurious to or detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant in this particular case has satisfied the second criteria as the self-storage facility is unlikely to increase traffic or noise in the area. There's several other B3 businesses already operating in that proposed area. That proposed building site is surrounded by mix of businesses, offices, agricultural uses, and industrial uses. The nearest residences are already divided off from the proposed self-storage facility by either a wall or a highway. It's unlikely that the proposed self-storage facility would cause an increase in traffic or noise or result in another detrimental impact. Further, the applicant, as identified by staff, has expressed the willingness to limit business hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, not the original 10:00 PM requested. That is done in a further effort to further ensure minimal detrimental impact to the public at large. The applicant has further ensured that they do not intend to permit large vehicles or unsightly fixtures to be present at the self-storage facility. In sum, the applicant has again demonstrated that they would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it's located or to that of the public welfare. Finally, the third criteria, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations, standards, and preserves the essential character of the district in which it's located, except where those regulations or standards are modified under Section 7-6 of the ordinance. The applicant has also met these the third criteria by establishing that they will apply and abide by the B3 area regulations and standards. They have not requested any variances, and they fully intend to comply with those existing regulations and standards. The proposed self-storage facility would be compatible with the already existing nearby B3 businesses. There's Aldi, Walmart, Murphy Gas Station, the United States Postal Service. In sum, that proposed self-storage facility does conform to the applicable regulations and standards and does preserve the essential character of the district that it is located. As we've addressed, there have been public concern, and those public concerns have also been discussed with my client. And with specifically relating to the stormwater, land development code is sufficient to mitigate this issue. The applicant will be provide will be required to provide that stormwater management plan, prepared by a licensed engineer, which would be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to its construction. This plan would be required to ensure that stormwater is handled adequately on-site and will cause no issues to the surrounding properties. As pointed out with the the lighting, specifically as it relates to the mitigation of the lighting on the proposed site, the existing regulations do require that lighting levels are no more than .2-foot candles measured from six feet beyond the property line and would also require that that any security lighting or after-business hours would be limited to no more the 33% of total light output on the lot in total. Further, Section 48D states that lighting shall be aimed or shielded to not cause a nuisance to public or nearby properties. And outdoor lighting shall have fixtures that shield the residential areas from the light. With regards specifically to the noise, Chapter 16 of the city ordinance regulates noise-related nuisances and applies to all properties in Urbana. Chapter 16 does prohibit loud noise, outdoor construction, and maintenance between 8:00 to 7:00 or between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM. It also prohibits mechanical noise greater than 55 decimals. The traffic issue is unlikely that the self-storage facility would generate any more traffic than already exists in the neighboring businesses, furthered by the fact that the operation times are also going to constrict any traffic in and out during the regular business times of the already existing businesses. The applicant has agreed to install security cameras that and also restrict access by gate throughout the entire property. There is that existing six-foot wall along the property's north and west sides, which was installed by Aldi when they developed. This not only provides screening and separation from adjacent residences, but the applicant would, in addition to that existing fence, be building fencing along the south and east sides of the property. The concern over no onsite staff is addressed by having the customer service phone number clearly visible on the property and off-site staff available to address concerns of both neighboring property owners and also the tenants within the self-storage facility. Dumping, not, the applicant has his own personal incentive to prevent dumping and unsightly conditions on the property to make it more attractive to potential tenants. But the presence of security cameras, combined with the restricted access to the property, should mitigate any dumping issues. And they also plan to explicitly prohibit dumping in those leasing contracts. The effects on property values, as noted by staff, there has not been any evidence submitted or research presented to the ZBA with conclusive evidence that the self-storage facility itself would otherwise harm property values. Additional findings that will support the conditional use permit. The City of Urbana Planning Commission staff, after extensive research, has recommended to the Board that this applicant's application with those conditions, as we've identified, operating from the the time of 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that they generally conform to the site plan. Self-storage facilities shall be monitored by security cameras. The installation of fencing, including language within the customer contracts, prohibiting unauthorized dumping of materials on the property, and having customer service phone numbers clearly visible on the property and monitored by onsite staff. The applicant has, throughout the process, and continues to commit to abiding by those conditions. conditions. Further, almost 40 community members have, through the signed documents provided, expressed support for the proposed storage facility, as shown on the document distributed titled "Offer in Support of Building Self-Storage at 205 North High Cross Road." The offer and support document was distributed to you all prior to this meeting. Clearly, there is public need and desire for this particular use. The ZBA has heard a great deal of individuals express their feelings against self-storage facility. All those concerns have, to my knowledge, come from Behringer Commons Homeowners Association. However, the ZBA in general must consider the community as a whole, and not just one particular neighborhood, and consider all the people in Urbana, as the offer in support of building self-storage at 205 North High Cross Road in Urbana, Illinois proves there is public support for such a facility. As mentioned, any determination made by this board for the approval or denial of the conditional use permit must include a discussion and determination pursuant to the requirements of the zoning code, where this board makes findings of facts regarding to the application on a basis of a decision. The applicant's application for a conditional use satisfies all three of the conditions that you see on the board above. There is no evidence that proves that any of the aforementioned criteria have not been met. Further, the City of Urbana Planning Commission staff members of the Urbana community do support this particular use. All public concerns that we have been made aware of at this point have either been addressed by the Land Development Code, the zoning ordinance, or by the applicant's own willingness to accommodate those conditions set forth by this board. Tonight, this board has three options: to approve the conditional use permit, to approve the conditional use permit with conditions, or deny the use of... We agree with the City of Urbana staff and respectfully request that this board approve the conditional use permit and include those conditions that this board sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions to be directed to the applicant?
I do have a question. I looked at the storage unit at Tatman Court, which actually looks very nice. It is surrounded by a wrought iron fence. At the time I went, at 4:00 p.m., there was no traffic there. There was no car or truck parked within the facility. And I assume it's full because people have said they need additional storage space. I did notice that there were two air conditioners, air conditioners on that site. Will there be any air conditioners on this site?
May I defer that to the applicant himself?
No, I wanted to make that comment that I had seen that, but I was concerned about the air conditioning and the fencing, but go ahead.
Hello, Board. I'm Wes Taylor. I'm the owner of PK Eds. Yes, so what you saw at Tatman Court, that's what we'd call a climate-controlled building. Basically, it gives people the option to have a place indoors that's heated and cooled during the summer and the wintertime, so if they have items that they want to store that they don't feel comfortable storing in a non-climatized environment, that gives them a place to store that. The building's a little bit more secure, just in the sense that it does have exterior walk doors that you have to walk through, than you get into interior units that are lighted. The same would go for that type of building. We would have security cameras inside so that there would be constant surveillance of anything that happens inside that building. But yes, there would be air conditioners on one of our buildings. There's five buildings proposed. We would only have air conditioning in one.
So you would have one climate-controlled?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it possible to put that air conditioning unit on the Route 130 side or the south side so that noise from that air conditioner would not be a disruption?
Yes. Whenever the HVAC contractor would design that, we would take all that into consideration and make sure that it's not going to be overly annoying to the neighbors or to anybody else.
And will that building be the same height as the other buildings?
Yes.
And would you have any opposition to something like a wrought iron fence, as is around the Tatman Court?
That's...
At least on, you know, the obvious sides.
Sure. That's actually the type of fence we'd plan to put in.
And what about your gate? What kind of gate are you anticipating?
So the gate would share the same characteristics as the fence. Our desire as a whole, I understand there's, you know, a lot of opposition, and, you know, I understand there is a residential neighborhood very close to this lot. I understand all of that. That's one of the reasons that we've made an effort to mitigate some of the concerns, even before we came to our very first meeting and there was as much opposition as there has been. You know, it's not our desire to do anything that's injurious to this neighborhood or any other neighborhood in Urbana. You know, we build in Urbana, our business is in Urbana, so, you know, our interest is to benefit Urbana, not be a disbenefit to anybody. So that's the reason that we've tried to make it not just a standard storage unit complex that you see driving down some country road where there's, you know, boats and trucks and cars and everything else parked outside. That's not what we want to have. What we want to do is we want to provide an automated self-storage complex similar to Tatman Court's. Tatman Court is out of, if I'm not mistaken, and I can't speak for them, I don't know them personally or anything like that, I believe that their last expansion was the final expansion that they have access to, so that limits the ability for another storage complex, you know, for them to add units to benefit public need or satisfy public need. There aren't a lot of other lots available in southeast Urbana. There's very few, in Urbana as a whole, really, that would fit this kind of use. But what we want to provide is something similar to Tatman Court. So automated, you would have a code to get in the gate, you would go in, there'd be security cameras, very well-kept, very well-maintained. You know, we don't want to put anything in that's going to be unsightly for the neighbors or Urbana as a whole.
How tall is the building going to be?
The building at the Eaves, and I would have to verify this, but I believe they're around seven feet tall.
So how high is the fence?
Six foot.
Is that a six-foot fence?
I believe the site plan actually shows an eight-foot fence, or not an eight-foot fence, an eight-foot building height.
Whatever the plan shows is what we would do, but yes, I can't speak to how tall the fence is because I'm not sure.
The fence is six feet.
So you would see the buildings over the fence?
There's the possibility that you would see some of the buildings over the fence, yes.
Okay, thank you. And what kind of fence are you considering building along the area that's already fenced?
So along the area that's already fenced, we would not build a fence next to the screening that's currently there, for a lot of reasons. Number one is it wouldn't really have a benefit. Number two is the lot that we're proposing this build on, the screening that's there was installed by Aldi's but is actually on an easement on that lot. So I wouldn't say that we would own that fence, but it would be our responsibility to maintain that fence. That was part of the deal whenever we bought the lot or went under contract to buy the lot. But to add a fence in front of that, if we ever had to maintain the screening that's currently there, it would make it difficult. We'd have to take our new fence down to maintain the screening, but the main reason would be that it really wouldn't serve any purpose. So the fence that we would put in would be on the side of the lot that's adjacent to Aldi's, and the side of the lot that would be adjacent to the, to High Cross Road or 130, where the sidewalk would be.
Okay. We close the business at 8:00. Does that mean that the gate is secured, that no one can get in? It'll be automated? No one can get in or out until 7:00 in the morning?
Correct. The only people who would have access after hours would be ownership, management, or city officials, city safety, public safety.
And will you prohibit then overnight car or truck parking in the facility?
Yes, we will. There will be no vehicle parking. There won't be room for vehicle parking, for one, but for two, yes, that would be prohibited.
Any further questions to the applicant? Thank you. Are there any members of the audience who wish to be heard in favor of this application? Hearing none. At this time, those opposed to this application can now be heard, so please step forward. And before you begin speaking, I would remind any speakers that if you have specific questions, you would need to address those to me as the chair and not to the applicant, staff, or any members of the audience. And if they are relevant to the case, then I will direct your question to the appropriate people at the appropriate time in the agenda.
Good evening, Board members. Much better, so sorry. Didn't realize it had been turned off. Yes, I'm Vicky Trimble from Behringer Commons. And we were unaware that there were any letters of support or signatures. May I ask, sir, who signed those and where those came from?
I have an extra copy I can...
I think this is the appropriate time. These were signatures on a letter in support of the self-storage unit from people in the Urbana community.
So not necessarily living in Behringer Commons?
I'm sorry, what?
Not necessarily living in Behringer Commons, then?
No, not necessarily living in Behringer Commons.
Just somewhere in Urbana?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, did you say from Champaign County?
I was just going to tell the chair, I think that the letter does include other people from surrounding communities who presumably have business in Urbana if they're commenting on this.
Right. That is correct. It's, there are people from outside of the City of Urbana, per se.
Okay, thank you very much.
Not from Behringer Commons.
Okay. Well, number one, why are we even here tonight? This case was decided in October. All of you had a quorum, you voted, and you denied the applicant, his application. The only reason we're here tonight is because the applicant filed an appeal, and he was told he was not eligible for an appeal, and then he implied a possible lawsuit because your decision did not go in his way. The city counsel, or the city attorney, was trying to mitigate the basis for a lawsuit by saying that the reasons you gave for denial at the October meeting were not legally sufficient. At that meeting, one board member said it was not an appropriate use of the property. Another board member said that it was clear that the audience is in opposition of the proposed request. Both of those responses could be your reasons for denial. It doesn't preserve the essential character of the neighborhood. And the City of Urbana is not the only one being bullied. We, the residents of Behringer Commons, have received veiled threats by the applicant that if the self-storage facility is not approved, he could build something even more offensive to our area and for our homeowners. And OSF has said that they want nothing more than to sell the property, and that in a B3 zone, some of the people they may choose to sell to could also build something offensive and out of character for our neighborhood. We've also been threatened that the applicant and OSF have very deep pockets and can outspend us in legal fees, and that's very true. We don't have deep pockets. We're fighting this issue on our own as a neighborhood and a tight-knit community. We from Behringer Commons will speak tonight to the three criteria and why this application does not meet any of the criteria for the conditional use permit. 66% of the homeowners living in Behringer Common within the 250-foot from the site have signed a petition in protest, and the requirement is 40%, but we had 66%. In addition, nearly 60% of all the homeowners and landowners, the lot owners, in Behringer Commons have also signed a petition in protest of this development. You are required by the zoning ordinance to ask for public input, so it must be an important part of this decision-making process. We hope you value our input and our protest over this proposed use. And I doubt that you're used to having 150-page meeting packet, which also goes to show how much the homeowners in this area oppose this application. The staff says this will generate more income for the city. In actuality, the city only receives about 15% of the county property taxes for the city. The city makes more money on sales tax revenue. Self-storage facilities do not charge sales tax. The income to the city would be minimal. The staff, in their revised recommendation of this application, challenged what we have said about the lack of self-storage facilities near residential communities. They listed seven storage facilities in Urbana, and they say they are directly adjacent to residential sites. As we've previously heard, three other facilities are in Urbana that are totally in industrial areas, and there's no residents nearby. However, two of the seven of those facilities are located in industrial districts, and one was permitted by Wright prior to 1999, so no public input was requested or provided. Both of them have industrial or commercial on three sides of them. Two of the facilities are in B3 districts but were permitted by Wright prior to 1999, so again, no public input was requested or provided to protest them. And they have commercial or industrial buildings on three sides of them, and only very small condos and apartments on the other sides, very different from the look of Behringer Commons. One of the warehouses on University Avenue has junk and old cars sitting out in plain sight. If you drive by and look at this, it's truly an eyesore. Storage warehouses do not add beauty to a lovely neighborhood. And what recourse would we have should in the future the applicant not do all these lovely things he says he's going to do? The remaining three are on Philo Road in an area that used to be Kmart and a supermarket, and it's now comprised of mostly storage units. Two of the facilities have small apartments again on one side, and one has a residential neighborhood to the east that is blocked by a landscape screen. I think everyone agrees that Philo Road is a problem, and the city's always looking for ways to revitalize that area. We do not want High Cross Road to become the new Philo Road. Thank you so much for listening to me and hopefully hearing what I've had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard? Need to sign in, sir.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
If the light's on, it's on.
Okay. What I wanted to address is...
State your name, sir.
My name is Richard Latman. I'm a resident at Behringer Commons. I'm the HOA president.
Thank you.
What I wanted to do is address the need for storage facilities in Urbana. No market survey was done, and so we don't have that to have any facts to look at. We have several conjectures and assumptions about the need, but no facts have really been presented. conjectures and assumptions about the need, but no facts have really been presented. So I wanted to look at some things that we can say. First of all, there's 31 storage facilities in Champaign County, okay? Urbana has almost one-half of those. If you compare Urbana to Champaign, Urbana has two times more storage facilities per capita than Champaign. And if you look at Philo Road, it's lined with storage facilities all along it, from Florida on down. So Urbana is rapidly turning into the storage capital of eastern Illinois. So the answer is, is there a need for storage facilities in Urbana? The answer is no. There is an abundance of them. You can even follow up on this by doing an online search and say, okay, how many open units are there in this area of Urbana? And what we did is we put that in, and we found there's about 140 or so open units available. These places are not at capacity, as sometimes suggested in the application. So the second type of, the second criteria of the first conditional use permit thing was, is there a specific need for a storage facility at this location, and does it fit? Well, the permit says there's only one, there's only one storage facility in this location. Okay, that's only if you use a very small scale. Okay, storage facilities are not something that you walk to. Storage facilities are something you drive to. So if you're driving, let's go, let's just take 15 minutes. How many storage facilities can you get from that lot in 15 minutes? Well, we looked at it in a radius, and you get about nine or 10. So there's not a lack of storage facilities in that, even in that area. So the answer to whether there's a unique need in that part of town is the answer therefore that is also no. So you have facts that you can use to vote no. The application incorrectly characterized our area. It says it's office, business, industrial, and agricultural. All you need is to come by or look at one of the maps. And what you see is, you have Aldi, B1. You have a residential subdivision, Behringer Commons. You have lots and lots of corn and soybeans on the other side. But you don't have offices. You don't have an industrial component. You have to cross over a major road to get into that aspect. So that corner has nothing to do with industrial or offices. What type of public input have you received? Well, as was just said, 66% of the people that live within 250 feet have said they don't want it. They're protesting, they signed a petition protesting against it. The entire subdivision, we were able to get 60% of the homeowners and lot owners to sign a petition saying they didn't want it, that it didn't look like it felt right, and it doesn't seem like it carries the character of Behringer Commons. And that's what we're worried about. So the voice of the residents is clear. They would like you to vote no. They would like you to use your reason and the facts that are there to vote no. Tonight, we heard about operating hours, and I'm glad that's one thing that came clear. Before, most storage facilities, they have operating hours. They're different from renters' gate access hours. So I am glad that they've changed this now to where the operating hours and gate access hours seem to be the same. So that's a good thing, but it really doesn't matter, because in the end, you're still talking about taking something that's industrial-looking and plopping it right down to a major subdivision. So, permit has many flaws, and I hope you can vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard in opposition to this? Please come forward, sign in.
My name is Bob Withers. Criteria number two, the proposed use should not be injurious or detrimental to the district or the public welfare. This location for a storage facility will be very injurious and detrimental to the district and the public welfare of the residents and citizens boarding the facility. There are financial considerations, increased potential for fires, increased vermin, and aesthetic effects. The staff says there's no conclusive evidence to indicate the storage facilities have a negative effect on adjacent property values. But there is evidence that it will have a negative effect on at least the market value of the homes. Right after the first hearing, just based on even the possibility of a storage unit in their backyard, two offers on a condominium were withdrawn. Eventually, the condominium sold, but for $35,000 less than the original asking price, a 14% drop. There are many things kept in storage lockers that could increase the potential for fires. This is because people may store hazardous chemicals, and people sometimes live in their units, bringing portable heaters, hot plates, portable toilets, and foodstuffs. We know that some of you don't believe that people live in these types of units, but they do. We personally know of people living in storage units. A clause in their lease forbidding that will not stop people who want to live in one. We have a resident Behringer Commons who owns a self-storage facility and acknowledges that people are living in some units, and that the amount of trash is excessive, and she has signed a petition protesting this self-storage unit in her backyard here. When people live in their units or party in or around them, they bring in food that will increase vermin, rodents, pests, who will most certainly find their way into Behringer Commons and carry diseases. These units will not be a complement to the neighborhood. They are metal warehouses, buildings with metal roofs, that will clearly be visible for many homeowners in Behringer Commons. There will be trash. As people clean out their units, they will dispose of them, the items they no longer want and don't want to move. If no trash or utensils are provided, they will leave their items in the aisles. For bigger items such as couches or chairs, they might even end up in the ditches outside the storage unit next to our entrance. The applicant has stated that he will explicitly prohibit dumping in leasing contracts. A clause in their contracts will not stop people from dumping. This will be detrimental to the public welfare. The privacy wall fence he refers to is only four and a half feet tall in some areas, and in other areas, it's six feet tall. It is still not high enough to block the view of these units from our homeowners. And as our area is not comprised of mostly commercial industrial-type services and buildings, as the applicant stated, we have neighborhood grocery store B1 to the south, resident to the west and north, and agriculture to the east. There are no warehouses north of University Avenue on High Cross Road. This proposed facility does not meet the requirements of criteria two. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Please come forward.
I'm the president of HOA 453, which borders the proposed self-storages. Criteria three states how the proposed use preserves the essential character of the district and how well it fits into the neighborhood. In his application, Mr. Taylor says that his development fits into the area, and it is primarily comprised of commercial industrial-type services and buildings. This statement is patently false. Earlier in the application, Mr. Taylor also states the location in which he wished to build is already made up of a mix of supermarkets and warehouse buildings. That's already been talked about. In order for that to be true, the parcel would have to be located south of University Avenue, because that's where the industrial areas are. The parcel is located in an area immediately bordered by Behringer Commons, High Cross Road, and a B1 zone plot that houses the Aldi grocery, which is definitely not a supermarket. All of this is obvious on exhibit B and C of the packet you were provided. Even with a wall between us, in the proposed location, his facility would be literally feet from the closest condominium unit. And feet meaning about 10 feet right there. It will, it appears that it will be more or less a part of Behringer Commons neighborhood and not definitely a good fit. As a resident of the housing unit that will be among the closest to the proposed facility, we'd like to point out that it's not simply the unsightly view and other concerns that render us so opposed to it. We, along with our neighbors from virtually every location in Behringer Commons, value our neighborhood community and want to see it flourish and continue to grow. We truly believe that a commercial self-storage facility on such a visible front corner of the neighborhood will make it much less appealing to potential homebuyers and new home builders. More importantly, it doesn't make sense that we have a Build Urbana Think program that's intended to grow Urbana's residential neighborhoods by providing prospective new homebuyers and builders with five years of property tax abatement and sales tax relief on building materials. In 2005, Urbana developed a comprehensive plan to help direct them in future decisions about developing and preserving aspects of the city. We understand it was reviewed in 2021. In that plan, one of the concerns is quality of life. In that section, some of the key goals and objectives include: to preserve and enhance the character of Urbana's established residential neighborhoods; to ensure appropriate zoning in established neighborhoods to help foster the overall goals for each unique area; ensure that the site design for new developments is established neighborhoods is compatible with the built fabric of the neighborhood; and lastly, promote developments that residents and visitors recognize as being of high quality and aesthetically pleasing. These goals and objectives are exactly what the residents of Behringer Commons are trying to achieve. We appreciate that Urbana wants to grow new business, and we're certainly not against that. But this business is not suitable for this location. It just isn't. Please consider the fact that our, our neighborhood went together and had this as a concerted effort to try to get this defeated. We're once again asking for a no vote on the proposed conditional permit for the property located at 205 North High Cross Road. Thank you.
You have a question, sir?
Okay, Mr. Tucker. So your, your house is, is it a condo or townhouse? How do I refer to it?
It's a townhouse.
Okay, your townhouse is directly affected by this.
Yes, sir.
So just explain to me, you have your double garages, and on both sides of the garage you have, one is a window and the other one is a door? Is that correct?
No.
I can't quite...
No. Basically, you've got a garage, and on the right side of the garage, you go to basically a hallway, an entryway.
And there's a window, and then there's a door off to the left or right of that window? So those windows would be the only way you can look at this property from inside your house?
Other than open my garage door.
Right, exactly. If you're out in your garage.
But every morning, when I do dishes after coffee, I look right straight out there and see, you know, I mean, that's what I see, and I will see two feet. I will see two feet.
Okay, and the trees that they planted there didn't grow too well?
Well, they did. They did, but that was 20 years ago. And some of them died. And basically, what's going to happen is we're going to come back to the zoning board for getting Aldi to replant some of those trees, because just, you know, they weren't taken care of very well. So, yeah.
And when was your townhouse built?
In 2005?
14 years.
Yeah. 2006, 2006.
Do you know when Aldi was built?
2004.
Aldi, when was Aldi built?
2004.
Well, actually, Aldi was built before. It was actually built before.
So basically, you bought your townhouse knowing that Aldi was there?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, there absolutely wasn't a question about that. But again, the trees were 12-foot high at that time.
Right, down in, excuse me, but down like 29, 30, and 32, the trees are still nice trees, right? Down by where you're at, they're dead, you're right.
Yes, they are. Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I think that's...
But that's not Mr. Taylor's problem. I mean, that's, that's Aldi's problem, because they own, Aldi owns all that ground. On the other side of the wall, Aldi owns to the sidewalk, actually. And so they, they have, you know, in perpetuity, agreed to take care of that property. And this year, we, it was really grown up badly. And so I contacted Aldi, their people came, hired a landscaper to come in and clear the stuff out. There's a lot of vines and invasive vines and that type of thing. And they basically killed a lot of trees, too. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Tucker, has the homeowners association ever considered buying that lot and then having control of that lot?
Well, it hasn't been for sale. I mean, the first thing is, it hasn't been for sale. Mr. Taylor's been under contract, and it, I couldn't go to them and say, oh, by the way, OSF, I want to buy your lot. Mr. Taylor has the first right of that. And the other thing is, we obviously could not afford to keep a lawyer. So how do you think we can afford to pay $400,000 for a lot? I mean, we really can't.
What is the value of the lot approximately?
I don't know. They're asking $400,000 for it. But I have no idea, according to the real estate records. I have no idea what Mr. Taylor is under contract to pay, have no idea what OSF is willing to sell it for. So I, that's just from public records.
Mr. Tucker, what, what street do you live on?
Rutherford Drive.
How do you get to that street? Going Behringer Circle, maybe?
No, I actually go, a lot of times go down High Cross Road. I basically, I actually go by that way more often than I go on 150.
Right, but isn't it East Behringer Circle is, okay, so High Cross is, right?
Yeah. Rutherford, Rutherford is right along this wall. Where's the, where's the other picture here?
I think I see him right up here, leaning against the board there.
Yeah, these are the, these are the, the town.
Right.
And as you can see...
So all of the, and all of the driveways and entryways for homes in the Behringer homeowners association face streets like Rutherford and all the streets inside of the neighborhood.
Yes.
But this would be entrance on to the outside of the, of the neighborhood, of the south subdivision. Because when I look at this, I'm just trying to point out, when I look at this map, it looks very clear that when this neighborhood was developed, they carved out that corner to be separate from the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, actually, it was, when it, when it was developed, from what I understand, from talking about the history of the neighborhood, that was all part of Behringer Commons. All the way, 150 to High Cross Road, all of that was part of Behringer Commons. And when the developer wanted to build the condos that I live in, he wanted to raise some money to do that. And so he sold a B1 permit, a B1 permit, because he could envision the possibility of a B3, when that lot got sold, causing problems. Yeah.
Are there any additional questions to Mr. Tucker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? All right. Please come forward, sign in.
My name is Joanne Buddy, and I have, I want to highlight some of these pictures here before I start, and to give you something that shows a concentric map of the area.
Excuse me, nothing you're saying right now can be picked up, so you'll have to go back to the mic.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just ask a question. I know, obviously, there's been some references to the pictures that are on these kind of poster boards, is if it's the intention to submit those to the board, really, for part of the record, for review, is if there's some way to maybe give them some kind of reference point, I suppose, if they're going to be addressed by anybody else after they kind of submit them, just to make maybe a little bit of clarity of, you know, what's, what these pictures are and, and what they're supposed to reflect.
So, yep. The, the concentric map, I'll get to in a few minutes, but again, I'm the last speaker. I thank you for your time tonight. I think photos can illustrate the point we're trying to make tonight, that this proposal does not meet the requirement for preserving the essential character of our neighborhood. These pictures around here show what the, what the view will be from many of our homes looking to the top of metal storage sheds and roofs. One picture shows that the lot is directly next to a number of front doors of residents, and, and here is what the storage facility will look like. Doesn't look compatible, doesn't look compatible. And, and when, I wonder how many of you would like that in your backyard or at the entrance to your neighborhood. When you make your decision, you're required to list specific reasons based on the criteria and the, and the ordinance. This proposal does not meet any of the three criteria. One, there is no evidence that there is a need for more storage facilities in the county. There are already a lot of vacancies, 153 in just nine facilities that we searched online. And in addition, U-Haul is building a new facility on University Avenue that will provide, you ready, 1,500 storage units, just two miles away. And Wes Taylor will be appearing for you next week to get a permit to build more storage off of Phila Road on Colorado Avenue. So this is not an app, this is not an area, as the applicant and the staff says, this is not an area with limited self-storage options. So it is not conducive to public convenience. Two, it will be detrimental and injurious to the neighborhood and the public welfare. Market values of homes will drop, as evidenced by the one that we just referred to, that just the idea of a self-storage nearby had two offers withdrawn. We have a letter from an attorney, or from a realtor who said, "I had two people willing to make an offer, and they, they declined making an offer once they knew about this self-storage." We also have many lots for sale that are less likely to sell with an industrial unit next to us. If lots don't get sold and homes don't get built on those lots, that's a loss of tax revenue to the county and the city, plus factor in the requests the county will get for reassessing our homes, being so close to an industrial facility. And there will be trash. People will dump, even though their lease may prohibit it. Here's an example that was on University Avenue a few weeks ago, just down the street from us. So people do dump big pieces of furniture. We don't want that in our, our ditches. People do store foodstuffs in their units, especially if they live in them. We will see an increase in pests, bugs, rodents, and other animals from the storage units into Behringer Commons. People do store foodstuffs in their units, even if it is prohibited. This will be injurious to the homeowners in Behringer Commons. Three, it does not preserve the essential character of the neighborhood. Metal warehouses do not belong adjacent to single-family homes. This is not, as the applicant and the staff have stated, located in an industrial and commercial neighborhood. It is not compatible with existing land uses in the area. There is residential to the north and west, a neighborhood grocery store to the south, and agriculture to the east. Okay, so now we're going to get to the concentric map. And when they say that there's commercial and industrial in the area, you can see that you have to go out 1,600 feet to encompass the self-storage on Tatman Court and encompass the Walmart. And if you go out 1,600 feet, you include almost all of Behringer Commons. So it is way more residential than commercial. The wall, okay. Most self, most single-story storage units are 10 and 1/2 feet tall. Some of the ones on Tatman Court were 14 and 1/2 feet tall. So nearby residents could be looking at eight feet of sheds and roofs. And a B3 district has no height restrictions, so the applicant could, at a later date, remove some of the units and build a multi-story warehouse. He might have to get a new permit, but it's, you know, they would probably approve it because it has no height restrictions. In fact, the city council agrees that this neighborhood is not appropriate for the types of businesses that qualify in a B3 district, and has already passed a resolution to start working on rezoning it back to B1. This is our neighborhood. Where's the picture of the lighthouse? This is our neighborhood, a community of four lakes, a lighthouse, a fountain, and two miles of walking pass, and over 10 acres of common grounds and shimmering waters. The staff says there are many, they list seven, storage facilities in the area that are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. Some of those are in industrial districts, and some were permitted by right prior to 1999. Some are close to apartments, and some are close to mobile homes. The attorney for the applicant says that the reason that there, that there's a need is because this board approved another storage unit earlier this year. However, it doesn't matter if you approved one, or if there's a lot of storage facilities next to residential areas, because in 2020, the planning staff, at your request, did a study about precedence and issued a memo about that. Their memo said, "ZBA findings must never be based on facts from another case or on the notion of precedence. The board has the power to deal freely with each new case, regardless of how it may have addressed a similar case in the past. Board members should not be concerned that making a decision in one case binds them through some notion of precedence to deciding future similar cases. In order for you to approve a conditional use permit, the application must meet all three of the criteria listed. It does not meet any of the criteria. We respectfully ask you to decline this permit." Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this speaker? Is there any rebuttal by the applicant to what has been stated here?
Thank you, Board. Very briefly, Kyle Lempkes, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is also present as well. We have both signed in previously. I appreciate the homeowners' concerns, and those homeowners' concerns have been heard by, have been heard by my client leading up to this point. They've been heard by members of the staff, and those concerns are sought to be addressed with some of the, the conditions that we are meeting in the proposed application, and as well as the changes that Mr. Taylor has proposed. They presented a number of fears and speculations and concerns, some of which they, they allude to some evidence of, but none of the evidence relates directly to my particular client, the applicant, as, as his management of this particular facility with these restrictions. Further, a number of those concerns seem to be directed more at a zoning issue rather than a conditional use permit application. I'll note that a number of the homes in Behringer Commons were built prior to, or were purchased prior to, the original rezoning of this particular parcel, that I, I see went through without objection. That, that additional zoning that continues to exist today, and the proposed use that my client has, as it relates to some of the more, or some of the less intrusive uses that are potentially available for this particular parcel. The concerns that were raised are adequately addressed by my client's willingness to, and his continued willingness to entertain those conditions that you may put on this particular application, and therefore we grant that the, or we request that the application be granted. Mr. Taylor has also requested the opportunity to speak on his own behalf as well.
Thank you, Board. First of all, I didn't say this earlier, but thank you for taking time out of your holiday schedule to have a special meeting, just for us and our self-storage complex. I certainly, when I proposed this, did not think it would end up here. And I also, I do want to go on record on my own behalf and say, number one, our motive, our objective, our purpose is not to get into any kind of a argument or anything like that with any homeowner, with any board member, with anybody like that. We proposed this because we felt like it would be a good use for this lot. We were directed to this lot. We did do market research, we did do market studies. It would be unwise of me, as a businessperson, to just decide to do this out of the blue one day. We did see a demand, we did see a need for self-storage, and continue to see that need. I do understand where Behringer Commons is coming from, in the sense that this borders a residential neighborhood. The unfortunate thing about cities and zoning is that, no matter how careful you are, there's always going to be a situation where, more than likely, zones over, zones interconnect. Residential and commercial are zoned together. Single-family residential, multifamily are zoned together. That's just the nature of zoning and how that, and how that it works. We did some research after the first meeting, when we realized how much objection there was. We did find that a lot of the homes on Rutherford Drive, specifically the addresses for the letters that were sent out, the 34 letters or whatever, well over half of those were either owned when the lot was rezoned from B1 to B3. Most of them were there, or were purchased, rather, after Aldi's was already built and this was zoned the way that it is, or zoned commercial at a minimum, which lends to the fact that, you know, the knowledge of this being a commercial property was there. I understand that the proposed use of a self-storage complex may not be the most favorable, but to that, and specifically what I asked to speak on my own behalf about, is the comment that was made about veiled threats by the applicant. I'm not sure what they're alluding to. I have not made any veiled threats of any kind. I'm not the type of person that's going to build something there that's purposely injurious to the neighborhood if I don't get to build a self-storage complex. So, excuse me, if that information has come from somewhere, it did not come from me, or anybody who works for me, anybody who speaks on my behalf, that is not our intention. The other comment that was made was about us having deeper pockets than them. That's another thing I have not said. It's definitely not our goal or purpose to have to spend $100,000 in attorney fees to try to get a complex like this off the ground. It's not, that's not our goal, never has been our goal. And I have not been in communication with anybody from Behringer Commons since this started. The only people that I have been in communication with are my attorney and his office, and the city staff, and just different communications about this case as a whole. So I just wanted to make that clear to you guys, and also to the members here from Behringer Commons, that if that information did come to them, I apologize, it did not come on my behalf, did not, certainly did not come from me directly, or at my direction. So I just wanted that to be known.
Thank you.
Do you have a question for him? Sir, would you be willing to build a less intense structure, say, five units less, so that the buildings would be farther away from the fencing? 300 units is a lot.
So this proposed, this proposed development is less than 300 units?
Oh, it is?
Yes.
By what number?
I believe the final number was somewhere in the 270 range.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any rebuttal by any of the objecting parties? Come forward.
His attorney says there was no objection to the rezoning back in 2020 for OSF. Well, first of all, it was in the height of COVID. No one remembers getting it. If you look back, most of your meetings were canceled that year, and it was being proposed as a medical center. That's a big difference, to have a medical center close by in your neighborhood as opposed to being a self-storage unit. The applicant says he did do a market study, but yet, nothing has been provided to anybody, I don't think, to show what that study revealed. As far as the veiled threats, at the October 18th meeting, he stood at the podium and said, at the microphone, and said, "You should be happy I'm trying to build a self-storage unit, because I could build something much worse." And the communication about they have deep pockets came from his attorney to our attorney right before we fired our attorney, because once they said, "We've got deep pockets, we'll outspend you," we fired our attorney. Thank you.
The applicant gets the final, make a final statement if they so desire.
I have no comment.
Thank you. This time, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Six times.
Can you email it to you when I get home?
Okay, okay.
I have a client.
Okay.
Email it to Nick.
Okay, okay.
It's easier.
I didn't change things.
I didn't, I didn't.
I can email yours.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
It's not legal.
It's not all.
Have you done?
Don't be mad at you.
I don't know how this happened.
I just thought it was a different one.
I know, I do.
I know, I do.
I'm sorry.
Oh, he's...
Oh, he's...
I'm sorry.
Oh, he's...
Oh, he's...
I'm sorry.
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 Yes, yeah, because that will be much better. And you could even just like... Number one, and then give a little word document that says one was...
Call the meeting back to order. We are at the point in the procedure, proceedings, excuse me, where the board now will discuss the case. Any board member wish to make any comments?
Well, I need to make an ask staff something here at this point, too. So, there's been tremendous discussion about need, okay? And conducive is being defined as need. Now, I don't ever remember sitting here being able to tell what a businessman, what type of business he could put in a particular zoning. I don't, I don't ever remember where we had to, had to say, "Well, the, the community doesn't have enough of these. It's great that you're building one of these." Or I don't remember, "We have too many of these. You can't build it here because there are too many of these." If the businessman decided that he wanted to invest his money and the uses all lined up, that was fine. So, I'm not sure if conducive and need are the same things in your mind?
They are not.
Do we have a definition, then, of what conducive to the public convenience would entail?
We do not have a good definition for that. It's always a tricky one. Is it convenient for the public is typically what we go back to.
I, I guess I'll make my comment on, this is actually the point that I'm not sure of. I'm, I, I feel that this particular lot is not part of the Berenger Commons neighborhood. It is not inside of their walls. It is not inside of their driveways. They have two entrances on, you know, on High Cross, one university to get into that particular area, and everything faces away from these properties, from this lot. But, that being said, if we're talking about what is conducive to the public convenience at this location, we've already discussed the fact, the way that this was originally zoned a B1, and it's been rezoned to B3, and that the B3 would only have the storage units if it's meeting a higher bar. And to me, it's like, well, if we've, if we're only barely passing the bar for a B3 to begin with, are we passing that higher bar of having, of giving the conditional use permit for a storage unit in this area? So, I still have some doubts on that one. I'll just make that comment.
Maybe if we can just keep all the mics on so nobody forgets, and our administrative assistant doesn't get mad at us when she goes through the video.
Oh, that's what I'm saying is, part of the reasoning that the staff gave us two months ago now for why the storage units have to go through a conditional use permit is because of the fact that you don't want to have an area that could be something that is presumably more conducive to the public, being taken up by a storage unit facility when something else could go there instead. So I'm, I'm sort of, just sort of asking the question, have, have the condition, has the applicant met the criteria or, you know, made the, met the standard of evidence to show us that this actually is the most conducive use as opposed to something that would be more like in line with Aldi, a more usable, everyday kind of store, shop, whatever.
See, my interpretation is, is there are many things that could be conducive, okay? And the staff thinks it is, according to the report.
I was going to say, I have read the minutes of the meeting of the 2004 meeting when there was a discussion about Aldi's and zoning it and permitting Aldi's to build there. And the hope at that time, as stated, was that perhaps north of Aldi's, there'd be something like shops of no wood or a really upscale restaurant. And in that 20 years, it really hasn't happened. So...
I would point out, too, that at that meeting, residents of Berenger Commons were also vehemently opposed to Aldi at the time.
Yes, they were.
That seems to have been a good fit. And those fears at that time were unfounded. I mean, couldn't say across the board, but people seemed pretty happy with Aldi at this time.
Well, and none of the fears about trash accumulation, excess traffic, theft, have actually come true with the Aldi store being there.
Well, I thought at the time, the big deal was the hours. At that time, grocery stores, some of them were open 24 hours.
Right.
And, you know, traffic going in and out. You know, we forget that grocery stores have, aren't open like that anymore. And the fence. But I think the main thing was that it was going to close at 8 o'clock, and that was really unheard of at the time.
And that was a compromise.
From my gut feeling, having worked as an assessor when Berenger Commons was started and platted until 2010, my gut feeling is that it is injurious to property tax values of the properties that are close to it. There's no way you can get around that. Just, I know when, you know, we've had to make adjustments for location, stuff that's adjacent to it. Properties where there's no parking on the street, for blocks, it's a problem. There's all kinds of things that come up, and I think personally that having this there is a problem, especially for the lots right along High Cross Road and Rutherford.
I'd like to point out, too, that there are a lot of other uses that could go here that could be more of a problem, which is not a threat, it's just a fact, that both of these roads are arterials with a lot of traffic, and so it's a, it's a good location for a business. And I also want to, this doesn't exactly go to what you were just talking about, but it's adjacent in the sense that, I did look up all of those other storage units that you mentioned and that were referenced by other folks, and they're not, I, I found a lot of them to be comparably close to residential areas, even if they weren't the same types of residential areas. Some of them were near multifamily or apartments, and I just want to be careful to point out that just because those are different types of residential areas doesn't mean they don't still impact residents, sometimes more residents. So I do think there are, there is a lot of precedent already for these types of uses adjacent to residential areas without documented problems. Not that there's never any problems from any uses that aren't the same, but it, nothing that rises to the level of common or widespread problems with these two uses.
What I was going to ask is, are there any more comments, questions, or anything from the board? Hearing none. Are we ready for a motion in this particular case?
I know. I would make one with some help, because I have a number of conditions I would want to put on it. And then I guess it could be either approved by the, or denied.
Go ahead and make your motion.
I move that the ZBA case 2023C-405 be approved with the following conditional conditions based on it. One, that self-storage unit will generally conform to the submitted plan, but that we decrease the number of units and the intensity of the building so that there is more green space and more space available for planting trees. And so it would be farther back from Rutherford Avenue. That the operating hours be between 7:00 and 8:00 PM. That there be no vehicle storage or vehicles permitted on the property between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM. That the storage facility be monitored by cameras. That any air conditioning units that were put in would be not on this side that would cause a noise to the neighbors. That the applicant install fencing around the south and east sides of the property. And that fencing would be similar to what is at Tatman Court, which is a wrought iron fence, well-built, and that the gate would be matching. And secondly, that the signage be a monument sign that would conform to what is at the Aldi site, and that the lighting would be as previously described, and that no building would be more than 10 feet in height. And that there would be an outside water spigot for water for plantings. I think many places frankly promised to put in landscaping and then don't have a way to water, so the trees die. And...
It's been moved. Is there a second to that? That motion dies for lack of a second. Is there any additional motions?
I move that the zoning board of appeals approve the proposed conditional use, use in case ZBA-2023-C-05 with the following conditions. That the self-storage unit shall generally conform to the submitted site plan. Two, that the self-storage facility's operating hours shall be between the hours of 8, 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Three, that the self-storage facility shall be monitored by security cameras. Four, the applicant shall install fencing along the south and east sides of the property. Five, the self-storage facility shall include language in its customer contracts prohibiting unauthorized dumping of materials on the property. And six, that the self-storage facility shall have a customer service phone number posted and a clearly visible location on the property which shall be monitored by on-call staff during business hours.
It's been so moved. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion of that motion?
It does not mention anything about reducing the intensity of the buildings or the size.
That it conforms to the existing submitted site plan.
Was, I think it said 300, and he said today 270?
270.
What he said, yes.
We would have to include the word 270.
I think that's in the testimony. And all that gets worked, all this gets worked through the different city organizations, correct, from here?
How, could you clarify what you mean by that?
The site plan reduced from 300 to 270 goes to the, to the water people and everybody when they figure out the drainage and stuff?
Well, the, the site plan will go. There will also be a stormwater management plan that has to be, that has to be reviewed and approved by our city engineer. I'm not clear on what this reduction from 300 to 270 units is about, sort of in, in physical manifestation on a site plan, though. I'm not, I need clarification there. I'll also add that the current site plan shows building dimensions, not a number of units. And then outside of that, that site plan, the applicant reported approximately 300 to us as the number of units.
Well, because it's, he said 270 today, that's on the record, so that is what we would assume the site plan would be?
I, I think if that's the number the board is wanting to hold the applicant to, that would need to be made a condition. It would be the dimensions of the buildings shown on the site plan that the applicant would behold, be held to by conformance with the site plan.
And maybe what we're really looking at is square feet of building rather than the number of units, because you can put up 500 six-foot wide units.
Yes.
So we really do want to look at total square feet.
I, I agree with you there. I agree that it should be dependent upon total, like, size, size of the buildings, not units, because units could become arbitrary for this condition. I would also ask the question, since one of the things we brought up was the location and how close it is to the homes on Rutherford, or I'm sorry, the homes on High Cross there on the north side of the property, if we should consider amending... on the north side of the property, if we should consider amending this to some sort of a buffer or setback away from the north property line, if it were to be proposed.
Okay, so the site plan that was provided in the, I believe it was the October meeting, somewhere here, it's got page 16, but it's item G1, I guess?
I can pull it up on the computer if that's helpful.
Well, I had to get out a microscope to read these numbers, but, so the first, the indoor building is supposedly 80 by 110. There's 24 feet between the building and the wall to the north side. Then there's 30 feet in between the buildings, the next building's 20 by 180. Don't know what the difference is there, I'm assuming it's 30 feet. The next building's 20 by 240 feet, and the next building is 20 by 300 feet. So what you're saying is you want to adjust the size of these buildings?
Well, what's the total building, like, if you add all that together?
The square feet? Well, that's a good math problem, which...
So the existing setback from that northern boundary, the, at the smallest point, is 22 and 1/2 feet.
Yes, and the, the closest thing to, to the boundary is 21 feet something, which is at the very far end, which is way down past the Aldi's and the very slim corner of the, would be southwest corner. And it's like 21, 20, and 23 feet all along the west, northwest, west boundaries.
I don't personally have the perfect number of what is the correct setback here. I don't know that any of us do, so I feel like we would need some sort of rationale for justifying putting in an additional condition.
That building on the north is also the climate controlled
Right.
Building, which would then have, I assume, the air conditioning or
Right.
Control.
Which, I mean, sort of the houses on all sides.
I know, but when you're talking about a building that size, you have to have...
There's one, there's one unit to the north of that, and then the, all the condos go dead north of there. There's no windows that I could determine on the side facing that of the one condo. And their backyards and everything face High Cross Road. And to me, if you calculate all this square feet, I mean, what are you going to reduce it by? 5%, 10%? Once again, I think it's up to the, the business to be able to utilize the lot within, you know, the best way that he can to design the units that he wants.
So we have the motion, it's been seconded, are we ready to vote?
I think, though, that it should be noted that if someone were to vote against this, they might be objecting to the, like...
Density.
The detrimental effect it could have on the district, and they could be voting against it because they believe it is not inappropriate, or, I don't have my notes up right now, again, of the, the most conducive use of this, it's not, there's not been appropriate evidence provided that this would be a conducive use of the property. I think those could both be good reasons why somebody might vote against this. I'll just make that statement.
Well, I'm of the opinion, if, if somebody does that and it doesn't pass, that another motion could be made with amendments or something that somebody likes, or if that's the will of the body, then it doesn't pass. But I don't think just because a particular motion doesn't pass that you can't make another motion.
I'm just making sure to document her reasoning, yeah, for the, for the, for the record.
Well, that's why we're here, to document the reasoning, right.
Anything else? And I believe then, this motion, we need it read again, is everybody? Then I believe this motion is ready to be called for a vote.
Mr. Roche?
Abstain.
Ms. Yuchtman?
Abstain.
Mr. Warrenbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester? Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
I need to take a look and see what we do with abstentions, so give me a minute, or we'll just let our attorney come over and answer the question immediately.
Was it 4, 1, 2?
Generally, when it comes to abstentions, in terms of calculating a particular vote, they go with what the majority has been in the yes or no categories of that, and the majority here obviously was yes, so.
Do we need to confirm that that's an absolute, or do they just go with it? Are you saying that the abstains go with the, with the majority here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that would be six in favor and one against.
There are two abstentions.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5 people voted. Four voted in.
There are four yes votes.
So 80%.
A little gaming here, huh?
Do we have to, do we need to articulate anything else?
Sure, yeah, someone who voted in favor, just state why you found the way that you did with respect to the criteria.
I love the criteria.
Yeah, just a second.
Do I have to phrase it in a certain way?
Why don't you give it a shot? I'll let you know if it works, bros.
Okay, well, I moved to approve because I agree that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience, convenience at that location, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental, given its location, and that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of the district in which it's located.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have any new public hearing, do we?
There are no new public hearings.
The unpension's business?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I'd point a word a little bit, I guess. I just want to clarify that, Mr. Garcia, do you have, I mean, when I think of findings of fact, it's more the why, not just a recitation of the, of the criteria themselves, do you have enough in terms of, yeah, the concept of bases? That's, it, it's difficult to think about the idea of the findings is, saying it's, it meets those criteria is kind of a conclusory statement, which is fine, there's nothing wrong with that, but it's, the findings are ultimately those bases, the why of why you're saying that's...
Sure. Okay, so, let's see. That it's conducive to the public convenience at this location, I mean, I talked already about its location at those two arterial roadways, it's an existing underutilized property that's been vacant for the last, well, at least 20 years, but beyond 20 years. So that was, that it's conducive to the public convenience at that location, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district. This is a relatively low traffic use, and on top of that, the owners have already made accommodations to be in line with the existing commercial facilities using the same hours of operation, and of course, conforming to other city regulations. And three, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of, and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located except where such regulations and standards are modified. The applicant has requested no additional special permits or variances in comparison to other uses that could be there. I think this is a good use that is not contradictory to the other uses around it, given the traffic, given the other commercial uses, and given the residential neighborhood. That what you needed?
Yeah, that, that gives me enough to write my decision sheet, thank you.
Any public input?
On now, Sarah Stannard. I recently reco, relocated to Urbana, and I've already seen some dangerous, there's a turn lane where High Cross and University hit. Now, there's a huge ravine there, I don't know about you, you'll have moving vans, cargo trucks that have poor visibility and mirrors. When you turn into that intersection, there's already cars getting cut off because you have a very short time period to get to that Aldi turn-in lane, the only turn-in lane that there is. Imagine that with cargo vans and moving trucks, that's someone's, a car accident could be the death of a human, and so I just want you to keep that in account. When you're allowing storage units, several hundreds, that there's going to be hundreds of times a year, maybe more, that people are going to be cutting people off and potentially getting in car accidents, because I don't know if you showed the pictures of the intersection of High Cross and University, there's a very little two-lane area where you have to get over to get to the right to turn into that entrance. That's all, public safety, number two.
Thank you.
Is there an appeal process?
I will let our attorney detail that.
As an administrative decision, the decision will be subject to appeal under the Administrative Review Act over to circuit court, and you would have to follow that procedure.
Okay, can we put, put it on notice that we plan to do that so the applicant doesn't run out immediately and buy his storage units?
I, I can't give you advice on how to pursue that, ma'am.
Pardon?
I cannot give you advice on how to pursue that.
Okay, I'm just trying to put the applicant on notice so he can't say I already bought the units.
Is there any staff report?
There is none.
Study session?
There is none.
Move that we be adjourned. I'm sorry. Tonight? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
To propose a study session and that we maybe look at potential areas of where the communication is not clear about what is allowed or not allowed in a B3 or B1 area, so that we can be very clear about that.
I, I need some clarification on what you're asking for. So what, what's allowed in B1 versus B3 is, is in the table of uses and in the, you know, the zoning description sheets that we have.
And also, how do we classify a self-storage unit under, I noticed it wasn't listed under B1 or B3 specifically. It is mentioned in the zoning ordinance on a particular page.
Yeah, it is.
86 pages long. Anyway, I was just wondering if we could discuss that at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.